Ready? Can I just start talking? Yes. Good evening, everybody. I'm sure we have this great crowd here. But it's the first time that we've ever done anything like this. We're at all the Constitutional offices together to talk. We have Honorable Mike Skinner, Honorable Buster Keppler, Honorable Jeremiah Benet. Is that right?
Benet.
Benet, excuse me. I'm sorry. Honorable Megan Horton, Honorable Keith Horton, who will be here. He's at a doctor's point, but he'll be here. And Honorable Chris Malphus, Sheriff. And we're here. I am John Kemp. I am Chairman of the Jasper County Council. This is my workshop, excuse me, Town Hall. All the county council people will have town halls all the time. We're trying to get out into the public. We're trying to... And that you just don't see us on a dice. We're people. I would like to thank the presenters for coming. It's a, I think it's historic, to tell you the truth. I think it's historic. And it's going to be videotaped, so we can see it on YouTube. If you have any questions, you can ask them. But it should be rebutted or to talk about, a clarification of what they talked about. This is informational. What's happening is people don't know what an order does. They vote for you, but they don't kind of know. They know what a trigger does, but not really deep into it. They don't know, they know what the court does, that's easy. The court, they don't know. The sheriff, they kind of know, but really, they have to deep dive. I just want to say thank you to Chris, Chris Van Gies, Councilman, a friend of mine. We've learned to be friends, to tell you the truth.
It's been hard.
Yeah. This town hall is a start. I like to do this quarterly. And come up here so you can talk. You can blow your own horn, you can do anything you want. I like to talk about budgets and what you want to do and what you're doing. Show the people what we are doing in Jasper County. The purpose is to educate. The frequency, hopefully quarterly. And we have an upcoming town hall on the 23rd at the Gillisonville Baptist Church. And it will be at 6 o'clock. At that, they'll have the school superintendent, the sheriff, and a cert manager, which is in case of emergencies. If the police can't get to you or emergency can't get to you, it's teaching you how to make do with what you got in an emergency until they can show up. And it's hosted by Vice Chairman Kili Rau. So the first one up, ta-da, is Mike Skinner, Treasurer. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, John. Take the podium here, I guess, Mike.
Right.
Want me to look at the camera here? Look at the camera. All right. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you all for listening at home. I am Mike Skinner, your Treasurer. My job is not just taking the money out of your pocket to pay the, to take the taxes. One of the main jobs of the Treasurer is to take that tax money and the bank accounts we have, manage those bank accounts, and invest to try and get a return on that money to kind of ease the burden of the taxes from the taxpayer on to, you know, get some operating money for the county. So our Councilman can spend it wisely and get more bang for our buck. That's what we do it. Now, to do that, I realize there's a lot of moving parts to that. So very early on, I realized, no, I need some experts in the field. So we contacted Tyler Frame and his company here, CashVest 3+1. A little bit of, there's a little dynamic there. But what I'd like for him to do is come on up, explain how we started and how we're doing now. So again, leave it to the experts to explain something. I could probably explain it, but I might slaughter it a little bit. So I'd rather hand it to him and let him give the good details. So without further ado, Mr. Tyler.
Thank you all for the opportunity. And to the residents of Jasper County, my name is Tyler Frame from 3+1. We provide our CashVest program to Jasper County and specifically Treasurer Skinner and the Treasurer's Office. Our job is really to serve as an extension of your Treasurer's Office team. So that means helping you all from the moment a tax dollar is collected to the moment that same tax dollar is spent. How can we maximize the value of it? Ensure that we're always earning and saving the most possible. As an independent third party, we don't actually manage the dollars the Treasurer Skinner does. We provide data, solutions, and again, working together collaboratively with him and his office and the county's financial providers. We work behind the scenes to help ensure that your taxpayer dollars go as far as they possibly can. So we are very grateful for the opportunity to serve Jasper County. And the results really do speak for themselves. We started working together in 2023, August specifically. And in the initial 12-month period that we analyzed, ending July 31st of 2023, Jasper County generated approximately $767,000 in total interest revenue. We're really excited to share that over the most recent 12 months, ending July 31st, 2025, Treasurer Skinner and his office have generated over 2.7 million, 2.7 million of taxpayer revenue on the dollars that he manages. So that's almost a $2 million increase. And that has resulted from a few things. One, he's using data to help put cash to work and invest it in options that are allowable under South Carolina state code. That also has the benefit of protecting revenue streams against market volatility. You might have heard that interest rates are always changing, and they've recently come down a little bit. Treasurer Skinner has taken actions to hedge against that interest rate shift so that your taxpayer dollars can be preserved as long as possible. A couple other recent enhancements, generated over $200,000 in revenue by using new types of financial partners that are also allowable under South Carolina state code. And we're excited to share that over the most recent quarter, the county's performance on the deposits that the Treasurer's Office manages was 92.3% of current market benchmarks. That's an increase from 89% in the previous quarter. Anytime a county is performing above 90% of benchmarks, that's a really good sign. And as an independent third party, we are happy to certify that Jasper County is doing everything possible to maximize your taxpayer funds. So thank you all so much for the opportunity to serve Jasper County and its Treasurer's Office. We are proud of all that you're doing to make your taxpayer dollars go further. And Mike, I think you had a couple of the things you wanted to say.
Sir? Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ask a question?
Uh, sir?
Is there anything we can be doing to maximize what we're doing even more?
We always like to say that we take baby steps.
Right.
So we never want to do too much all at once. But what we are working on right now is identifying cash that's a little bit longer term in nature. And where can we potentially invest that cash under an allowable investment option in South Carolina state code? So that's what we're working on right now. And also making sure that cash that needs to stay at the bank and be liquid for daily operations, that we're getting the best rate possible on that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Tyler. On top of the bank accounts, I would like to announce that I am rolling out a new payment portal online. There are some hiccups. I'm always looking to improve and make something better for our taxpayers. Always trying to get ahead on technology. We've got some clashes with the different technologies and levels we have within the county. Some things are working against each other. We're working really hard to get that seamless and bring it to the people and make it ready in time for the new tax season. It's been a challenge. But you will see, hopefully, some improvements on the website, on the payment portal and some of those moving forward. So if there's any questions out there, hit up Jasper County, ask and answer on Facebook, The Voice, or email us, call us, well, don't call the office, we're a little busy there. But hit us up, email and on Facebook, and we'll gladly answer any questions you have. Or come see us. We're always smiling there. We love it. And without, that's all the time I got, I think. I think John's looking at me. I don't hear the buzzer going off, but I appreciate the time. Thank you, John. And we'll talk some more.
Thank you, Mike. Next up is the probate judge. Honorable Buster Keppler.
Thank you, Buster. Good evening. I'm Buster Keppler. I've proudly served as a Jeff County Probate Judge since 2013. I'd like to thank Chairman Kemp for putting on this a workshop.
No, it's a town hall.
Town hall. And also Councilman Van Gies for being here. Thank you. Together, we support the rest of the council and everything they're working towards. Probate Court, we are a court of record dating back to 1912, when the county was originated. I'd like to give a brief overview of what we handle in probate court, and then I'll discuss our budget. We handle estates of anyone that passed while living here in Jasper County. We are set to open around 300 probate cases this year. We also issue marriage licenses. We'll issue about 250 marriage licenses this year. And maybe 50% of those will do ceremonies. Many families have appointed a pile of attorneys, but when a person passes away, the pile of attorney ends, and there is a void until we appoint a personal representative. A personal representative is either appointed by the Title 62 or the Probate Code, or a will. The personal representative's signature is therefore the same as the decedent and serves as a credential to handle all of the affairs. When a person is no longer, has their mental faculties and can't sign a pile of attorney, then attorney gets involved with medical testimony. At that point, we move into a guardian. The way to remember it as a guardian, you're in charge of the person's best interests and their well-being. The next, would you, would also be through an attorney, would be a conservatorship. You can remember that you can serve money. So a conservatorship handles all financial responsibilities. We also handle all mental health orders along with chemical dependency and involuntary commitment orders. To better understand this process, because there's a lot of confusion in it when families find themselves in this situation and they bring law enforcement in, a very quick explanation. When a family member calls, we have now a mobile crisis team that will come out to the house to make sure the person's evaluated and see if they actually meet criteria. Then we sign a custody transportation order. This order allows law enforcement to pick the person up and take him to custody and take him to the hospital for evaluation. Our probate court consists of three employees, Canetta Washington, Dixie Ford, and myself. And we work together to provide the best service possible. When a family member comes to probate, they're lost. Sometimes they feel very lost and unsure of the next steps. Our job is to navigate them through the entire process. As far as our budget, we continue with the same budget since Ronnie Malphus was here. For many years, we only controlled three line items. Our office supplies, travel and training for any mandatory continued education classes and any new computer equipment needed. We allow the county council to assign a reasonable amount each year and have always felt the administration, finance, and the county council have been very accommodating for any financial needs for the probate court. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. And if there's any questions, we have an open door policy. No appointments or no reservations needed. If you come right onto probate court, we'll be glad to help you. Thank you.
Again, quick question. Is there anything we can do as a county to help you out, you know, with efficiencies or anything like that that you see that you have issues with?
Not right now.
Really? Good.
You've done a good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next person up is the coroner. Honorable Jeremiah Benet.
Benet.
Very good.
I'm good. Thank you, Chairman Kemp, for the invitation. Appreciate you being here, Councilman.
Good to see you.
Thank you all for everyone who's here to support us. And for all of those who are out in TV land, thank you all for joining us also. I know you won't be able to ask any questions tonight, but please feel free to call my office at any time. So my name is Jeremiah. I am the coroner. I was newly elected here this year. So this is my first term. And I have had the privilege of serving Jasper County as deputy coroner for a total of seven years under two previous coroners before I was elected. So I'm not new to the game, but I am new to the coroner's office. And I would like to thank the county council for the support that they give us and have given us since I took over. They have been very easy to work with, and they have made my job most enjoyable. So what do we do? So the office of coroner is tasked by state law to investigate any and all deaths that happen inside the county. That means homicides, suicides, accidental deaths, car wrecks, drownings. It also includes us in hospital deaths. If a person is admitted to the ER and they die within less than 24 hours, we have to be notified because chances are a doctor will not sign that death certificate and is going to fall back to the responsibility of the coroner's office to do so. And we do get quite a few of those. One thing that we are involved in that most people do not realize that is if someone dies in the operating room, on the operating table, we are then enlisted to come in and investigate because at that point in time, was it an accident? Was it a medical condition that we did not know about prior to the surgery? A lot of questions have to be answered. When those questions have to be answered, we enlist a pathologist at the Medical University in Charleston, South Carolina. They are our state agency that helps us prosecute cases and also identify whatever cause of death may occur. If it's natural, so be it. If it's not, and we need to bring charges, then we do so with the proper jurisdiction and proper police agency. In Jasper County, we have Hardyville, we have Ridgeland, we have Jasper County. So we work with each one of those departments on a regular basis. So far this year, the county has, or the county coroner's office has been involved in 397 deaths. Most of those, of course, are natural and are hospice-related. But of that number, we have had four homicides in Jasper County. We have had eight suicides this year. We have had 24 accidents and 335 natural and then a couple of miscellaneous. But for a total, that is what we have dealing with at this point. Now, I do not have the statistics from last year given today right now, but we are ahead in call volume from where we were last year this time, which was under a different coroner. Our budget, we are operating under at this time is been funded 23% of the budget, which would be right in line. Would be in the first quarter of the year. And our total budget is, we are at 13%. So right now, we are under budget, and I'm thankful for that. And I hope it stays that way the rest of the year. Things change during the winter months and things change during the holidays. So that just does happen. But right now, everything I can report is going smoothly. So I thank you all for y'all's time this evening and your attention. So do I have any questions from the office that's on the floor?
I have one.
Yes.
Drugs. How would we save the drugs out there?
Well, last year, and the sheriff may speak to this later, but South Carolina started a new fentanyl law. So there's a lot of prosecution with fentanyl deaths if we can put somebody to the sale of fentanyl. Why did they do that? Because fentanyl deaths are up drastically, yes. So we are dealing with a fair number of drug overdoses.
Do you get logged with the wife?
We do. We report every suspected OD overdose to the OD map, which is run by the state. Then after we do toxicology, if it's confirmed, then we report it back to them. And they put it in as an OD map. And that OD map helps us find hotspots in the county where more drugs or less drugs are being sold and used.
And that's the ARP, ARP money that you can have?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our telephone number at the office is 843-547-8295. That rings directly to my desk. If anybody has any questions about anything that I spoke on tonight, please feel free to call me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is the Honorable Megan Horton. She wanted to be first, but she isn't. So here you are. It's your turn.
First off, thank you for all who came tonight. And for those of you watching, thank you for watching as well. My name is Megan Horton. I am the Jasper County Auditor. Been auditor for about two and a half years. Learned a lot of things, met a lot of people. And I'm excited to see what all happens in all of the rest of my time as auditor. I do have a PowerPoint today. So for the people in here, you can see it. And I think you're able to see it online as well. I wanted to start off by introducing the faces of the auditor's office. My deputy auditor is to the left, her name is Sherrell. She's been with us for about five years. And then beside her, I have Maddie. She's been here for as long as I have, so going on two and a half years. And then to my far left, I have Teresa, who has been here going on four years. So two of them have been here longer than me. They're all three wonderful assets and couldn't do my job each day without them. We get asked all the time what auditors do. The title's kind of confusing. So I'm going to start out by explaining a little bit about what my girls do each and every day. Sorry. So my girls, one of the most common things you'll see them do is register vehicles, boats, aircrafts, and campers. Another common thing we do is apply the high mileage discount or the high mileage discount. We simply print out bills for the taxpayers to pay across the hall in the Treasurer's Office. Their girls are responsible for homestead exemptions, DOR exemptions, and exemptions due to disabilities. So with these and the high mileage discount, we do try to do everything we can to keep the bills as low as we can for taxpayers. As they're dealing with the taxpayers who come in to see us, they're also answering questions on the phone and answering email questions. So they stay really busy. There's also some things they do behind the scenes that a lot of people don't know about. They make sure that all information is complete to send out first time issued bills. They do stay in county business personal property. They complete assessor changes. So they work with the assessor's office to do legal residence and assessment changes. And most importantly, they make sure all the information is correct for tax bills to be sent out in a timely manner, which is very important. Then what do I do as auditor? So I work with the county council in both Hardyville and Ridgeland to help organize the millage. On the 15th and 30th of each month, I get all the information to the treasurer to, for full and partial refunds to make sure that the money gets back to the taxpayers. I work with the assessor's office to issue rollback taxes, which deal with land. I work with SEDOR to complete several reports. But one of them that sticks out is the local government report, which helps set the budget and important things that are going to be coming up within the year. I also work with SEDOR to create utility bills and manufacturing bills. And I also work with them to be able to come up with the correct amount for the local municipalities, Ridgeland and Hardyville in the county, to see the amount they're going to get back for homestead and manufacturing reimbursements. The last thing on the PowerPoint is probably one of the trickiest parts of my job, which is... which is creating ELO bills, also known as fee in lieu of tax. Fortunately, the county has someone to help me with this because it's a lot of reading through agreements and a lot of different ways that the bills are dispersed. So, very fortunate to have him to, um, be able to help me with that. Hopefully, that helps a little bit clear up what we do. Um, I'm going to move on to our budget. Um, our budget has pretty much stayed the same since I've been here. And from what I understand, it's pretty much been the same even before I came. It's pretty simple. Um, of course, the salaries and wages have gone up a little bit because of cost of living and increase in pay. But the total for the four of us, we have $212,200 for salary and wages. Our employee benefits total is $57,200. Our telephone and internet, $3,600. Um, some, most of this is self-explanatory. Our materials and supplies are $8,700 for the year. Our repairs and maintenance contract, which is like our software programs and our scanners to make sure that we keep up with important documents. It's those type of things. It's $5,000 a year. And then our travel and training is $6,600. Um, this allows the four of us to be able to go to trainings and learn new things. Um, we try to go to whichever ones we can, since there's three girls in the office. Um, myself and one of the girls go each time, so we can rotate out and so they're each able to grow and learn more things. Last but not least, I have the up-to-date budget report. So, the, but our budget so far this year, um, again, self-explanatory. To the very right, you will see the percentage of what we have used so far this year. Um, some you'll see zero, some are small amounts. Um, the biggest right now is the 56% and it's just the maintenance contract. But we're right on track with this as well because these are things that we just do once a year. So, just like in the years before, it looks like we're right on track. Um, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if there's any in here. If not, feel free to call anytime, email, and we'll be glad to answer questions the best we can.
Just for the audience, SCDOT, what is that?
SCDOR.
DR.
Yes, sir. That is the South Carolina Department of Revenue.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
So, kind of like one of the things of the other questions I've asked. I mean, is, is there anything to think of that would help you on day to day to make you guys more efficient? Anything we could do to help you guys?
So far, anything, we've been very fortunate. If we need anything, last year, we did have to come before council for a few things. We were given things with no problem. Um, so any help we've asked for, we've always been given. So, again, we appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. You did well. Next up, clerk of the court, uh, honorable Keith Horton. No relation, I don't think.
Keith wanted to be a part of court since you joined the county. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, that's watching on TV, of course, and the council members that's here. Um, for showing up to give us this opportunity to reach out to the public and let them know what we're doing and everything with our stuff. I think this is a good topic. Hope time, next time, we can put more people in the audience to get one-on-one questions and stuff answered right away for them. But again, like everyone else, I am available at the courthouse five days a week, nine to five, pretty much, and normally you can catch me after that if doors unlocked at front. But, um, we're there to answer any questions you may have of what we touched on here tonight or any questions or issues you may have in the future. Reach out to us. My door is open. One of the things you're going to get ready to hear is I'm going to turn this over to Jessica. She is our new public relations space to counsel and the funding and stuff they gave us. She runs our jury now, which was originally funded for, now she does jury and public relations for us. We're out in the community a lot more and stuff, getting out to the public, not having the public come to us to see us. We're reaching out. We work hard closely with the sheriff and his event now and other places. We're going out and bringing people into the courthouse. I'm going to turn it over to Jessica. We have a quick PowerPoint for you. And then I'll be right here to answer any questions or anything you have after.
Good afternoon. As Mr. Horton said, I'm Jessica Davis. I'm the new public relations specialist for the clerk of court. And I'm going to touch on a few different things. The clerk of court has multiple departments within his division, so I'm going to take some time to go ahead and introduce you what we do and what each department is about. We're part of the 14th Judicial Circuit and we serve as the official record keeper for the courts. We help ensure judicial process and everything runs smoothly for the citizens. We work closely with the public defender's office as well as the solicitor's office to make sure everything works well. We're going to start off with our Common Please department. It is now its own department, whereas before it was run within another department. We wanted to make it stand alone because we want to improve the case management load as well as the accountability and efficiency we can offer to those people coming from Common Please. We recently in Common Please have dispersed several funds. Approximately 1.9 million has been identified and dispersed. And this is unplanned or outstanding funds dating back several years. We have used efforts to make sure that all of these funds were distributed properly and in compliance with the law. So, every single one of that 1.9 million has been back dispersed. I would also just like to say, Common Please is a department made up of two people and that has been a very well-run department so far. And our fa- family court, family court department is now made up of five individuals as well. We've established a set-off department to manage all the collections coming in. We've reopened the payout window to better serve the public and streamline all the transactions coming from family court pay. And all this additional staff is to improve response times and the service quality within the family court department. We're working with security and compliance. We've updated the FTI, federal tax information compliance standards, to meet with our family court. We're ensuring safe handling of all the court documents and the payment data throughout that come through us. We are now providing copies for name change and divorce pro se filings. And this is where we are now accepting our child support payments directly through the family court, whereas that was not an option before. Moving right along to our third department the clerk of court oversees is general sessions. It is made up of four people. We use this department for operations and efficiency, and this is one of the main departments that run the courtroom. We have a set-off debt management, which helps with outstanding debts and all the collections. We use an online tool called CMS to utilize the court management system. It improves efficiency, reducing manual entry and storage errors because it is an online program instead of just hands-on manual entry. We are responsible for the staffing and record keeping of the courtroom. Whenever we have court going on, there are always two employees present in the courtroom at all times. This is to maintain safety and compliance with the law as well as any records that we have that need to be kept during that time. We, we also have the bailiffs. We'll get to that slide. We are fully managed and tracked with CMS for transparency and accountability. General Sessions is now working with the Preservation of Evidence Act. We're focused on maintaining that integrity and accessibility of all legal records and evidence. This will eventually get to the point where we can add this to the public to view. Not this. We're getting there. Sorry. This is the one we're working on, preservation and digitization of the court records. We're working with the historical status to get that back and our goal is to make documents more accessible, organized, and secure, not just for our staff, but for the public use as well. The modernization efforts are transitioning from that paper storage down to the digital archives with that same CMS that I keep talking about, court management system. We enhance the searchability and reduce the physical need for storage where everything is now online in an online archive format. We are also working closely with the archives department to ensure the proper preservation methods are being taken for those paper documents. So, once we ensure they're documented on the paper, we will now have our online format easier for us to view and access. I have a quick chart for you to look at. This is just an overview of the cases that have been logged since Mr. Horton took office. You can see in Common Please, in January, we had 4,317 cases. We have now closed majority of those cases and are currently at 774 active cases. In general sessions, we start out with 1,415. We're now at 1,213. The only exception to going down would be family court due to the increased population Jasper County is receiving. We see that going up, but with family court cases, it's a trend to always have. We are back to reopening our passport processing. It was closed for a little bit, but we've reopened it now five days a week. It is by appointment only, but it has provided more efficient ways to ensure the citizens of Jasper County can get a passport. Now to my job. I am your public relations and community. We provide infor- informative sessions. We host educational sessions for the public. We include topics from jury, service, accessing records. All of those are sessions we have held within the courtroom or have talked about. We're getting involved in the community. We participate in local events, civic awareness, and we collaborate with other departments throughout the county. We also now are working with school and youth programs. We have tours scheduled to educate the youth of our county on what exactly is going on within the courthouse. We help host hands-on demonstrations and Q and A to teach the responsibility of your civic duty. These are just a few topics of the public relations of our outreach that we have already done. As you can see, we have already participated in three this past year with two coming up. Two of our main ones, we partner with the sheriff's office to get out and stay in contact with our citizens. We also have Low Country Legal volunteers coming to our courthouse in November to do a WILLS research program. So, if you're interested in knowing anything about WILLS, that will also be on our Facebook page you can get in contact with to see what is that about. Now, our jury coordination. We have now established the new jury coordinator position in order to oversee all related functions with the jury. We're responsible for summons, scheduling, and communication with the jurors. It ensures a smoother and more efficient process with the citizens and the court staff within our courthouse. We've also added bailiffs and ushers in order to strengthen the courtroom's safety while maintaining order as well. We focus on providing the secure and professional environment, and that is exactly what those offer. One of the main things that is different from last year with the clerk of court is Mr. Horton's office has relocated. We are now in the front of the building, right by the security when you walk in. It is easier. It's more accessible. He provides more visibility. If you are looking to access the clerk, he's right there. It's more time. It's like he likes to say, he has an open door policy. Just come knock. It enhanced our customer service. It improved our workflow, and it's a better way to secure and monitor the courthouse. Some additional updates and initiatives. We are doing cross-training between our departments where, yes, you may be in general sessions, but you're also going to learn family court with Common Please. We are going to be a well-rounded courthouse to where we know what we are doing in each department. As I stated before, we work closely with the public defenders. They now have a setup of their own office within our courtroom that they are welcome to use whenever needed. We are in the process of reopening the main entrance to the courthouse. So, we will be using those front steps once again, allowing our citizens to come in the front instead of having to re-enter the back. And we are using our professional development across regional conferences to go to the clerk of court. Mr. Horton is rotating his office staff just one at a time to see who is going. And we are promoting innovation and we are learning the practices of court administration. And that is all I have for you. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Horton to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I'll touch. I'm nowhere at a time. If you want to touch.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Um, I'm going to be honest. I have a slide showing our budget. We had an event come up at the courthouse today that has tied me up. That had to be handled. I have this year's budget, but it did not, it lasts years to put me out of due comparison. So, if I'm talking up here, I'll get along. I can give you a brief synopsis. We're not hiding behind doors. The county council has been generous to us. My budget is more than the previous administration. We're doing more, not a, not an insult to the former administration. We're doing more. We're reaching out different areas. We're providing more services and stuff. So, we're spending, doing more people, so we had addition staff and stuff. That's the biggest increase in my budget, the staff increase. We did that to make it more effective, so we can stay in compliance with the laws that we're required to. In the long run, I can assure everybody, the taxpayers, what we're doing, what we're spending, will save you a lot more money spending it now than if we didn't start spending it and spend it in the long run.
Just, I mean, I'm extremely impressed with the efficiencies and streamlining you guys have done with updates and, uh, initiatives. Is, is there anything that's, that's out there still that you're struggling with, need help with?
Don't really want to know that, but I will. The biggest problem we're having, and I hate to say it, is dealing with the administrative staff. I have a lot of, from finance and stuff, that's where we have a lot of issues still that we need to work out and get straight now, which was part of the issue today I had. We don't have a good relationship, and I hate to say it, and I'm not calling any of it. It could be my fault. It could be their fault. We don't have a good relationship with the finance department to come in and work and do stuff. It seems like we're fighting each other and.
Do you have a plan to work that out?
We have, I've made, I've reached out. We're trying. We've done stuff, but it's, it keeps coming back. And like I say, I'm not knocking Miss Burgess and her staff. It's just, it's not working. That's what I've seen to be the biggest problem that we encounter. It's just, it slows me down to get to my finances and stuff. I feel like I'm having to fight them. And it may not be. It just may be this, different personalities. I'm not going to sit up and accuse anybody.
Well, I'm impressed with everything you've done so far.
That's, that's my biggest holdup.
I got faith in you. I think it's going to happen.
We're, we took steps this week to go to outside financial, um, company to try to get us to come and help. I can't sit on this problem with the money, or may not be a problem. I can't sit with issues we have that need to be checked into without making steps to do it. And I've waited as long as I could to kind of use what we had, but I cannot continue to do that. I have to make steps to do it, to get it straightened because I ran to do that for the taxpayers and I owe it to them to make sure the money, everything's accounted for and it's being accounted for correctly. And we're, we're doing everything we can, and I apologize about my budget having to go up. But again, I can promise you, you will never have me ask for more than what we need to do our job proper. We're not going to overspend.
Thank you. Uh, Keith, I just have a question, just to clarify. What is your relationship with the magistrates in the local?
I deal with very little with the magistrate office, to be honest. Now, my staff in general sessions, they do because of getting warrants and stuff in and out. My dealing with them is very, very slow.
So, like, there's something wrong with the magistrate? Do they go to you or do they go to magistrate?
They're, they're going up to court administration over there. They're not typically coming to me. They'll pass, they'll, the magistrate, they won't pass their pieces up if it's a higher level or they can't set bond. They pass it down to court, moving up court level. But I, so far, have not had interaction with the magistrate judges and stuff like that. And we have, we might not have any issues either. So, we have not, that has not been an issue with anything I had to deal with in court.
When you do the, when you're doing the, uh, stuff, getting the, uh, reports into the computer, are their reports in the computer or is that something different?
Theirs is on their side, not what's in there, but we can see part of theirs and stuff. So, they got, we can track, if you're, you're an assistant for a crime, we can go back and we can see where it is throughout CMS stuff, yes.
And your local, like the Hardyville and Ridgeland?
Yes, I have. We work, yeah, a lot of time Judge Nancy will come in our office to bring stuff. We work with them. We work with Taylor originally, Judge Schoggens and his staff, Katie and them, they're in bringing their stuff. So, we work with them. Magistrate, we just don't, it's more telephone, email-type transaction. It's not a lot of face-to-face with them. We deal very closely with the sheriff department, his staff, and detention center. And all that is great. Like I say, all of that, everything's going good. And like I said, we just got, we've been here, I think, 10 months. We got some bugs to work out and hopefully we can just get them worked out, but we can't sit waiting and not move forward to get it until we get it worked out, so. And again, I appreciate it and I do want to recognize Laura. I had two new employees when two new divisions came in here, Houston Deputy, Laura Malpers. And, um, if you've seen the case of 4,700 down to 700, I think, right now, that entailed hospital time and everything else with high blood pressure. For her, not me. I probably should have been there, but it was her. So, a lot of work's been done. I have a great staff. We had a great staff that stayed over from Ms. Boston. We appreciate them. We've worked together. We've bonded together good, and we have a real good staff. And I think we're doing good work for the citizens of Jasper County, and that would not be possible without county council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And last, and last, we have the Honorable Chris Malfris, our sheriff. Chris, you're up.
Thank you, John. I appreciate you hosting this for us, and I believe it's been much needed and it's important that your elected officials and your county authority folks are held accountable to the citizens. I think it's a good thing, I'm sure John plans on doing many more, and I look forward to those. Councilman McVie, I appreciate you being here, sir, and support. And all elected officials and county employees, thank y'all for being here, taking time out of your busy schedule to be here. I'm your sheriff, Chris Malfris. This is my fifth year, I got a prior term in office, so it's my ninth or 10th month into the second term here. And to just say simply, my goal, or my responsibility as your sheriff, is simply to keep you safe and to increase the quality of life and public safety. However, we wear many hats, just to give you some information, so far this year, as of today, the Jasper County Sheriff's Office has handled just over 20,000 calls for service. So if you look at it, we're a very, very busy department, we're one of the largest departments in the county. We have nearly 80 employees and, like I said, a lot of moving parts. We have a lot of responsibilities by law. The average citizen don't understand really what we do and what we're responsible for by law, just to name a few. We're responsible for courtroom security. So every single court that we have in this county, my responsibility is to make sure we have courtroom security. So you think family court, civil court process, magistrate's court, and your general sessions court, court of common pleas, all the things. Every time there's some kind of court being held in Jasper County, we are responsible for having and providing courtroom security. So that's a big feat, it takes a lot of folks to fill their shoes, like I said, a lot of moving parts, and so we're busy, busy all the time. Another thing that we do is civil process, and we're required to serve civil process paperwork. We're going through a civil penalties case against someone else, you're suing someone else, et cetera. We have a very large responsibility in that. We work very close with your clerk of court with security and rearranging transports back and forth of inmates and jurors. We do a lot of those things too, on top of our day-to-day call-taking and proactive policing and all the things we do. We're also required to handle all of the sex offender registry stuff, so all the sex offenders that live here in Jasper County, they're required by law to come in and to report at least once a month to us if they have any life-changing events, if they've moved locations, if a new sex offender from another state moves here, they have to check in with us within three days. And we have a sex offender coming to Jasper County to visit, whether it be for a funeral or for vacation or whatever may be, by law they're required, if they're going to be here more than 10 days, they have to register with the county sex offender, which is what we're in charge of. So that's just a, kind of a small amount of what we do that's required by law, but I'm here to say, as your sheriff, I'm proud to say that we've doubled the amount of deputies that you see in your communities. When I first took over almost 10 months ago, you know, we looked at the patrol division, we look at the department as a whole, and we say, you know, how can we make the citizens feel safer? And obviously, the number one goal of that is to put more boots on the ground, more deputies in the communities with marked patrol cars, so when you see it as a good person, you know that that's a deputy. You know, we try to take all of our unmarked vehicles off of patrol, place them with marked vehicles, so you know immediately that it's a good guy, and so the bad guy knows immediately that it's also a deputy. And we've also allowed our deputies to be proactive, your crime rates are going down, we're being more proactive. If you pay attention to our Facebook page, we're paying attention to the news, you see we're making a lot of drug arrests. And I've used this statistic for many, many years, that FBI says that nearly 85% of all crimes we deal with are drug-related. So obviously, we need to attack that drug problem, which is what we've been doing, and you know, we've really, really buckled down, really focused on that, among other things, but we know if we can attack that and we can reduce that, it does a few things. For one, it reduces crime, but for two, it saves lives through overdoses. We know the fentanyl is on the streets and our coroner Renee spoke on that, and it's epidemic across the country right now. So we're trying to do all we can to stop it before it gets in the hands of the user. Like I said, if we can stop it and help their, push their life one day further, maybe that'll be the day of intervention, they can change their ways and they can get help and the family can step in, or we can step in with the family and help push them to a place of some type of recovery. So we've added, we went from four patrol deputies per shift to eight, so we've doubled the amount of deputies in the communities. And when I was sheriff before, one thing we did is we broke the county down into zones, so we have deputies assigned to each zone. And the reason why we did that is because it reduces response times. So if you call 911, our response time is dramatically decreased based off of the way we set the zones up. And of course, my goal is to have 10 deputies per, 10 or 12 deputies per shift. Obviously, the more deputies, the safer you will feel and the more arrests we make and more deputies in your communities and neighborhoods. So we've increased patrol, we've increased our drug arrests, and of course, like I said, the crime, crime rates are decreasing, which is what we want to see. So far, we've added deputies to the government building, so we have full-time deputies working here in the courthouse every day to keep you as citizens as you come in to deal with your county business, but also our county employees, when they come into work every day, they see the deputies, they have to go through metal detectors, and obviously, it makes them feel safer. I'm proud to say that we've been awarded four grants so far. We've been ordered, rewarded a $4,000 grant for software downloading so deputies can upload into the field, they don't have to come to the office and connect to wifi, they can do it from their vehicles. And that way, it leaves the deputy in the neighborhoods, in the communities, policing versus having to drive to the office, sit there, let the car and everything upload by wifi and do all the things there. So we got a grant, $4,000 grant for that. We're awarded a $635,000 School Resource Officer Grant, that's five positions, no cost to taxpayers. We also received a $27,500 grant for traffic overtime and an Exxon, which is a camera grant, for $47,000. We don't realize that every single video that we record, whether it be in the car or the body cameras, that has to be stored. And that's the meat and potatoes of our cost when it comes to our body cams is because every officer has to wear one, and our policy is they have to wear one, and anytime they interact with the public, it has to be recorded. So with that being said, that footage adds up. And last time, one thing we created was a vetting system or purge system, which dramatically reduced our bill. Basically, what that means is, instead of just storing all those videos, the hundreds of thousands of videos just on the server, which cost us a large amount of money, we created a purging system, and the system will purge those videos based on how our officers label the videos in the system. And once it's purged, then we no longer get charged for those. That was one way that we reduced the cost in the past, and then of course, the grant is another way to kind of bring that bill down and supplement some of that cost. And we are currently pending a grant, we hope to find out any day now, of nearly $1 million. So I don't want to get caught for the horse and talk about it too much, but we've been awarded four grants and we have a fifth one out there that we should hear any day now that is nearly $1 million that's pending, so. You know, we went through our budget, we tried to trim some costs, we realized that we could change cell phone servers and save us a large amount of money, and then we also were paying for a, it's called Power DMS, it's a system that we use for our policies and procedures, but when we got here, all our policies were gone. So we began to look and explore, and we realized that our ADP payroll system does the same exact thing, we're already paying for that, so we cut out the Power DMS and we now use ADP for all of our policies and procedures. For the first time ever, we were audited by the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy. They, they say forced, it's mandatory for us to have all of our policies and procedures in place, but also to their standard. So they came in last month and they audited us, and I'm proud to say that they said we're in the top 20% of all law enforcement agencies across the state. So that was a big one for us, first time we'd ever been audited, and they were looking at every policy procedure, word for word, to make sure that it was in accordance with their standard, but not just in accordance, they also wanted to see proofs. So it's not just we have a policy, we have to show them every time we dealt with a certain issue that that policy applied to, that they made sure that we were in accordance, not just have something on paper, but we're actually acting out and acting according to what our policy says. It's called proofs. So I gave you an example of chase policy. They want to see your chase policy, but then they also want you to say, show me every time that your agency's been in a chase under your command, and we want to see where you're acting in accordance to your policy, which is aligned with the state policy. So I'm happy to say that we passed that with flying colors and our staff sweated that out for many months because we had to get all that stuff repaired. We had to revend, we had basically complete a brand-new policy procedure made. And then, of course, we're in the process here, they're taking over animal services once it's fully established, we're going to be planning to take that over and supervise that. And I can stand up for all day long and tell you what we do and the many moving parts that we have, but I'm going to stop and open the floor for questions from anybody if you have any clarity.
I've got two questions.
Yes, sir.
One just came in from a Jasper County citizen. Sheriff Malfris, can we have a Citizens Police Academy like Hardyville?
We're in the process of doing that. And like I said, it's taken us as the Sheriff's Department a little long to establish our footing, if you will, because we have a lot of moving parts, a lot of records keeping, we have a lot of things that we had to get straight, a lot of things that we needed to reorganize and get in line with not just the way we wanted it done, but the way the state wants it, and the state has really stepped up and held the police agencies across the state to a much higher standard, which is a good thing, because obviously, that relates to more qualified and more highly accountable officers in our communities.
Cool.
So that is the plan we have, we plan on doing that. The next thing we plan on doing is a reserve program that allows our citizens that live in Jasper County or, you know, very close to, to be able to serve as a sheriff's deputy in a reserve status, it's kind of like a volunteer firefighter. They come in and we train them, we send them through about a six-month program, it's a couple nights a week, and we basically, they go to the academy and once they complete the training, they take a test, and they're able to serve their community as a reserve police officer, have all the rest powers as an ordinary police officer, except they'll do it for free. And a lot of retired folks that live in some gated communities and even up in the northern part of the county, you know, they're retired and they have a lot of time on their hands and they want to step in and help their community, and that's one way that we, we're going to eventually start that program. We did it before, we're going to do it again, along with the Citizens Police Academy, along with your Neighborhood Watch, we had a lot of things planned, but it just took us a little bit longer to kind of get our sea legs under us this time.
And then secondly, how are you doing on the budget?
We're good. We looked at it recently, finance sent out, and you know, it's 12 months in a year, you should be about 8.3% of your budget each month, which adds up to your total budget. As far as I know, as far as our numbers, we were under budget last year, you know, ended June 30th, and so far this year, we're currently under budget now.
Very good, thank you.
So, you know, and the thing about it is, what a lot of folks don't realize when it comes to finances, is, I'll give you an example, we have about 10 or 12 police cars that we need, you know, deputy cars that we need to have outfitted. Well, that was approved two budget cycles ago, but that didn't hit then because of, bureaucracy of the whole system, well, now that's going to hit this year, so the money was allocated two years ago and it wasn't used, but it'll be used in this budget term. So that may, you know, obviously, that one line item might go up a little bit, but you'll see a spike in that. It's not because we spent more money than what we're allotted, it's because just it hit on this budget cycle, not on two years ago when it was originally approved.
So is that what we call it, a convergence?
Yeah.
A convergence.
A convergence, yeah. So we're all learning together, you see.
I like that word, a convergence.
And that happens a lot. You know, we have some contracts that are once a year, we have some that are biannual every other year. So it just depends on when it hits and when it's all allocated and they hit the budget and you see it come out.
Awesome. Well, thank you for all you do.
He didn't ask me the same question he asked everybody else.
No, because I know what's coming. We have a meeting on Monday.
And I say this, as law enforcement officials, it's a little bit different for us because we have, we don't have to. Our goal is to stay above the growth curve, Jasper County being one of the fastest-growing counties in the country, you know, we need the deputies and the officers in place before all the growth is here. We can't, you know, if we get behind, then it's bad for us. And I always say, you know, and I'm thankful for the county council we have because they realize it's better to be proactive and spend the money upfront than to be reactive and pay your deputies out here working on all these big crime scenes. And I'm proud to say we've had one homicide this year through the sheriff's office. I know Coroner said four, and that's including Ridgeland and Hardyville City Limits, but as far as the Sheriff's Department goes, we've handled one and we've made an arrest on that one pending prosecution.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Chris, would you like to say something?
I think I've said enough today.
That's unusual for you.
I know, I'm tired.
You should have said dig, but anyway, I just want to thank everyone for coming. Just as a little, I'm doing a meeting tomorrow, doing a speech tomorrow, and in 2015, our budget was $20 million. Today, or this budget is about $62 million. Now that seems like a lot of money going up, but look what we've done. I think we've doubled what the sheriff, we've raised all the salaries, right? We've done a lot with the clerk of the court, and we still have so much more to do. We have to prepare and prepare for growth. You think growth is now, it isn't now, it's in the future, believe me. There's a lot more coming, and we have to prepare now. This council has been forthgoing on these things, and please bear with us. You know, in part of my speech, when I first came on in 2020, we had 60 years' experience. Now I have eight, the council now has a total of eight years' experience. We're learning, but that's good because we're learning, we're not accepting, we're asking questions. You know, when I was on the council in 2021 for an hour and a half, two hours, now it's marathons because we're asking questions, we're trying to get answers, and if we don't get the right answers, we postpone it. We take the executive session, we put it at the end so we don't come out of executive session and make some rule or do something, it goes to the next meeting, unless it's an emergency. We're trying to be transparent, proactive, and this is one of the ways. I'm sorry that people didn't show up, I'm sorry for you taking your time here, it will get better. I'll look at it, see what I can do. If it's a good idea, you got to work at it, and this is a work at. I think everybody was comfortable today, you see what's happening, we had a good dialogue as much as we could have, and hope the public who's watching will learn something from it. So thank you very much. Anybody has anything to say before we leave?
Thank you, Captain Mahoney.
If not, thank you very much. Jonathan, you're all ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you.